So now that we're recording, then we're going to introduce our speaker. And this topic this month is something that means a lot to me. I think that tribal consultation is an absolute must. And I was kind of surprised when I took office that I kept learning more and more. And we really don't have a good tribal consultation policy within the city. And so we have Petra Morris, and she's the Associate Director of Planning and Policy Development for City Council Services. And she's going to walk us through the proposal that's before council or will be before council soon. It's come through the EPC. And so we can learn about what this proposal is. And then, as you all know, at the end, when she's finished, we can do Q and A. So hold your questions for her until the end. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Petra.
Hello, everyone. I'm Petra Morris. I work here at Council Services. I'm the Associate Director of Planning and Policy Development. I work with all nine of the counselors on their land use planning matters and also other policy initiatives. I have been working for the IDO for a number of years and was part of the team that worked with the counselors in getting the IDO adopted. I am going to share my screen. I put together a few PowerPoint slides so that I don't lose track of my thoughts as I'm talking about this. And also to try and make sure this is an easy and digestible topic because it's not super easy. So as Counselor Fiebelkorn mentioned, this is a presentation about the Tribal Engagement Amendment Proposal this year and this year's annual update. So just as some general background, the city has a zone code. The zone code is called the Integrated Development Ordinance. And as part of that Integrated Development Ordinance, we have an annual update process built into it so that there are regular scheduled updates. This year's annual update has a proposal from Counselor Fiebelkorn about tribal engagement. This is a two-part proposal because part of the changes are broader and legislative in nature, and part of the proposal is specific to a very, to a small area of town. And so I am going to talk about the broader proposal as well as that smaller area. When I get to the smaller area, I'll talk a little bit, I have to be a little bit more careful about how we have a conversation about that. But so tribal engagement, as Counselor Fiebelkorn said, we do not have any formalized process for communicating with tribes and pueblos in New Mexico within the development process. Generally, they can become involved in the same way that the general public can and that they can somehow learn about a development proposal by maybe seeing a sign or seeing a story in the journal or other informal methods. But we don't have any formal mechanism. And so in thinking about this, there is a portion of our Integrated Development Agency today that requires that all development applications get sent to commenting agencies. And so all developments anywhere in Albuquerque today, when the application comes in, we send those applications off to a number of different government agencies. And we ask them as commenting agencies for their thoughts. Those thoughts are not limited in any way. And they get 15 days to send us their perspective on the implication. Some examples of some of our commenting agencies today. We have the ABCWA, which if you know all your acronyms, this is the Water Utility Authority. We send them to Albuquerque Public School. In some instances, we send the applications to Kirtland Air Force Base. And in some instances, we send applications to the National Park Service. Comments have to be received within that 15-day window, and they're considered by the decision-making body. Whoever is the decision-maker on the application is provided with those comments. Depending on what the application is, sometimes the decision-maker is a city staffer in the planning department. In other instances, that decision-maker is the Development Hearing Officer or the Zoning Hearing Examiner or in the Environmental Planning Commission. Any one of those different agencies, their thoughts are provided forward. And so this is the framework where we're proposing to add tribal entities as part of this proposal. So if I go to my next slide, here is where we're proposing to make the changes. So right now, for development within 660 feet of the Petroglyph National Monument, we send comments. We refer applications to the National Park Service and the Open Space Division of the Parks and Recreation Department. This proposal would also add Indian nations, tribes, or pueblos, and then tribal representatives. My next slide will tell you a little bit about what we mean about that. The other areas are development within 660 feet of major public open space. And so that is Indian nations, tribes, or pueblos, and tribal representatives. Our major public open space is a mapped layer. This includes the escarpments, the volcanoes, the bosque, the mountains, the T-Harris biozone. These are all major public open space areas within the city. And then also development within 660 feet of tribal land. And again, it's Indian nations, tribes, or pueblos, and then tribal, to the tribal representative. This proposal also includes, in all instances in the city, when an archaeological certificate has an application, that we notice Indian nations, tribes, or pueblos and the tribal representative of either the certificate of no effect or the certificate of approval. I've got some slides that I'll come to in a few minutes about the archaeological certificates. Whoa, my PowerPoint just vanished. Right, let me reopen that. Sorry about that. Elaine or Counselor Fiebelkorn, would you be able to open the PowerPoint that I emailed out ahead? Because, oh, okay, never mind. It's opened itself back up again. I don't know why it just did that. Sorry about that. Okay, right, let's go to slideshow. If we can start. And. Okay, so here we are. I was just about to change us to new definitions. Maybe I accidentally knocked something. So.
Your first slide.
Oh, okay. Oh, because I've clicked on the, there we go. Right. Are you seeing new definitions?
Yes.
Great, okay. So the, when the IDO refers to Indian nation tribal pueblo, what do we mean by that? So here's our definition. So for the purposes of this IDO, the designated chief executives or their designees of a federally recognized Indian nation tribal pueblo located wholly or partially in New Mexico, the tribal liaison with the city's Office of Neighborhood and of Native American Affairs shall maintain an updated list of the names and contact information. The "or designee" was added at EPC. We heard from, I've forgotten who. We got some comments. I'm just completely blanked on who they came in from. I think it was Kim? But, or maybe Terry Sloan. But anyway, that many of our nations, tribes, and pueblos have a historic preservation officer. And so that that would be a logical person to receive those requests. And so we added the "or designee" language so that those chief executives could choose someone to receive those notices. The tribal representative is the tribally-appointed representative currently serving on the City of Albuquerque's Commission on American Indians and Alaska Native Affairs. The tribal liaison with the city's Office of Native American Affairs shall maintain a not-laced list. So I'm trying not to treat it all off too much. And then tribal land, this is land held in trust fee, fee land or land owned by tribal government, Indian nation tribal pueblo. So in terms of, you know, where we mean by tribal land, that means, you know, the, for example, the pueblos around us, you know, very easy to think of like his letters, Sandia. But it also includes the Albuquerque Public School lands, Albuquerque Indian School lands, sorry, where the Indian Cultural Center is and the lands that have been developed around there. All those lands that are owned are held in trust. And so this would include those lands as well. So when, the way that this would work is that a property owner would have land that needs to be developed or that they wish to develop. They come in with a site plan or a zone change or a subdivision action or a platting action. And when that application comes into the planning departments, the planning department would send that application to the contacts that are listed here in these definitions. And those contacts in turn would have 15 days to submit any comments back from the proposal. So I had mentioned at the beginning of the presentation that there is also a portion of this that is for a small mapped area. So in addition to proximity to major public open space, which does include the Petroglyph National Monument and in proximity to tribal lands, the proposal also includes development within the Northwest Mesa Escarpment View Protection Overlay. This is the VPO2. And in the same way, it's noticed to Indians, Indian nation tribes or pueblos and the tribal representative. The area in question is both the area with the stripes and the polka dots on here. This is the VPO2 area, the Northwest Mesa View Protection Overlay area. It generally covers the land along the escarpment and around the volcanoes. And then the land kind of around the back behind where visually the escarpment comes up to the volcanoes. The reason that this area is included is there are a very large concentration of culturally significant and sacred sites in this area. There's a lot of archaeological work in this area. And so we wanted to make sure that this area was included in the proposal because of that sensitivity. This is the portion of the proposal that is quasi-judicial. And so if you have questions about, specifically about the VPO area, at the end, there's some contact information, and please just give me a call. And I can, I've taken 232 calls so far on this topic, and I'm happy to take as many more as we need to. But we just can't talk about this with Counselor Fiebelkorn outside of a council meeting. If, when this comes up at council, Counselor Fiebelkorn needs to be able to say that she is having the same conversations about this as all the counselors are and that they're all having it on the dais together. So this is the informative portion on that QJ part. And so I'll move on from that. So our archaeological certificate, so this would apply everywhere in the city. So archaeological certificates are applicable for preliminary plots, site plans, and master development plans for projects that are over five acres in size. So these really get to when land is undeveloped and you're coming in with a proposal to develop land. And that it's at over five acres in size, it's probably not being disturbed in any way. And so that's why the archaeological certificate kicks in. This is part of the archaeological ordinance, which goes back over 20 years. The, so what happens is an application for an archaeological certificate is submitted. The archaeological, the city archaeologist determines that the development will either not have an adverse impact on a significant archaeological site. And then they issue a certificate of no effect, and then the development proceeds. And so in this proposal, Indian tribes, nations, and pueblos and the tribal representative will get noticed at two points, when the application is submitted and that a certificate of no effect has been issued. In the instance where there is something there, so you have your application, and the city archaeologist determines that development may have adverse impacts on a significant archaeological site. The archaeologist will then require a treatment plan by a required, a certified archaeologist. The city archaeologist has 15 days to review and decide that treatment plan. And then implementation of the treatment plan is made a condition of the approval of whatever the application is, whether it's a preliminary plot, a site plan, or a master plan. And so in this instance, tribes would be noticed at these two points, when the application is submitted, and then also that a treatment plan has been, has been required. So we also heard during the EPC process, there were some comments received from, again, I've forgotten who it was, but it was the same, same set of emails. One was, could we include the historic preservation offices? So that's where we added the "or designee" language. There was a request to also include the bosque. The bosque is covered by major public open space, and so that's actually already within the application. And then the last request was that 15 days is not very long. 15 days is not very long. However, it's the same 15 days that we use for all our other commenting agencies. And so to extend the timeframe, we would have to extend the timeframe for the Water Utility Authority APS for all applications citywide. And we felt that the ripple of that would get us a lot of pushback from folks in the development community concerned about overall timeframes for just general development. And so rather than changing the 15 days, EPC added a condition that would require a pre-application meeting for the following application types: archaeological certificates, master development plans, subdivision of land minor and major, subdivision of land bulk land, and then zone map amendments, EPC and council. And when these applications are within 660 feet of major public open space or tribal land. And so this would actually be getting those tribal entities involved in the conversation before the application is actually submitted. And so in this instance, they would be, rather than being involved as a commenting agency, they would instead be being consulted to a certain degree in the similar way that we have pre-application meetings with neighborhood associations on applications for development. So, and this was added to EPC. So our process so far, in the fall of 2023, a memo was sent to the planning department to add this proposal and explaining that it was a two-part request. The IDO annual update, which was the legislative portion, which is the portion we can talk about today, was approved by the EPC in January, January 11th, recommended, sorry, recommended for approval by the EPC on January 11th. They had two conditions, the one that added the "or designee" language and the, also added the pre-application meeting. The small mapped area amendment was heard on January 18th by the EPC. And this one had got a recommendation of denial. So there was not really any public comments at the EPC meeting on the 11th. There were letters in the record in support of the proposal, and the EPC commission were generally supportive of it. But when we came to the small mapped area proposal, because there was a lot of individualized notice associated with this, there was a, the public comment was mixed. And there were folks speaking in support and folks speaking in opposition. And the EPC ultimately recommended denial. This just means that when the application comes onto council, the record will show that there was a recommendation of denial. But it does not stop the application in its tracks or anything like that. So next steps, this comes on for review and recommendation by the city council. And that's a subcommittee, that's the Land Use Planning and Zoning Subcommittee. We're anticipating that we'll receive this in spring of 2024. The planning department gets 60 days to transmit the proposal to council. That would get the bill to us in the middle of March. And so that would most likely be with us in the two LUPs meetings in April. But until we get the bill, we don't schedule those dates. We might get it early, in which case we might be able to schedule it earlier than April. Or we might get it late, in which case we'd schedule it later. And then it would move on for a review and decision by council in late spring slash early summer. And then my last slide brings me to my questions slide, which I'm actually going to stop the share so I can put my contact information in slide. Because, how do I do that?
And just while she's putting her contact information up, if you have questions, I know it takes a minute for all that to sink in, but just raise your hand. You can do it by going down to the reactions and then raising hand. Or you can just literally, you know, wave at me and I'll call on you when she gets the contact information up.
Here we go. Can you see my contact information? Great. So I'll just leave that up for a few minutes.
Okay, folks. I would jot down that information if you want, particularly if you have questions on the quasi-judicial part. Again, I don't want to have to recuse myself, so we're not going to talk about that part. But if you have any questions about the citywide proposal, which includes the notice, the opportunity to comment, and the pre-application meetings, and the really interesting process around the archaeological sites, let me know, raise your hand. Petra has agreed to stay on with us for a while and answer any questions.
And I'll stop sharing as well, so we aren't all looking at it. Big slide.
Either you explained it so well that there are no, or it was, it's just clear as mud, huh? I will tell you guys that, you know, I went into this with, I want tribal consultation. And then we started getting into, you know, exactly what that would look like and what the process would look like. And it's a very detailed, hard-to-develop process. But I think, I think the proposal is a good one. And, you know, it's, it's not letting tribal partners have any final say on development, but it does give them a voice in our process, and I think that's incredibly important. So I'm very proud of it. Oh, yeah, Cheryl. So this is Cheryl. Go ahead, introduce yourself and then ask your question.
Hi, Cheryl Gibson, Bel Air Quadrant here in Albuquerque. I just, you know, I didn't want, I didn't want your guest to feel discouraged. Petra, is that her name?
Yeah.
Excuse me. Yes, okay. But I tuned in with no knowledge about what was going to be discussed. And then it does sound like a very complicated topic, which will require me to review this video a number of times, I would think, and look at maybe other information for me to be able to think of a question to ask because it seems so complicated. But I appreciate, I appreciate your contemplation and, and planning. And I will get caught up. And I didn't want you to be discouraged because no one was playing the game. Thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl. Thanks for being here. It is, it is very detailed. You know, like I said, I just wanted tribal consultation. Told Petra, and she was like, yeah, that's, there's a lot to that, and we need to get into a lot of details. So she did a great job of pulling us all together. Oh, hey Peggy, I didn't see you come on either. Introduce yourself and then ask your question. You're muted. Peggy, you're muted. There we go.
Hi there. Thanks for hosting this council, and I very much appreciate it. I've been a longtime advocate for community voice in our planning of our city. And I recognize the need for tribal consultation on any matters that affect their boundaries and their areas, and primarily where things may be disturbed for their heritage. Unfortunately, our current system of voicing public opinions at EPC and at LUPs and at city council is very restrictive. And so the voice that you hear and the comments that come forward, such as when Petra said, you know, we had these feedback at LUPs and we had this, or we had this feedback at EPC. And so there was a denial at EPC. That is not indicative of the people. That is not a valid way to organize public response to this issue. And with the technology that we have and the capacity that we have nowadays, there is no reason that we can't have a poll across districts and have counselors actually representing what the people think. I would really like to see that taken seriously as an effort within the city council and an effort within the administration to improve the capacity to understand the actual perceptions and voices and directions of the people of Albuquerque, primarily in regard to growth at all costs and to the kind of quasi-superficial atmosphere that we have of calling updates to our zoning appropriate on an annual basis. But let me not get too far into that. I just really want to support you in this effort. And I believe in the voice of people making better decisions for our community as long as it's heard. But when you say that the voice of the people was heard at EPC, well, that's not accurate.
Thanks, Peggy. Do you have a question for Petra or for me?
Thank you. No, I have written to Petra, and she has supplied me with a great summary of the situation, and I very much appreciate it.
Okay, so thank you for those comments. I just will remind everybody, you know, we sent this out in the District 7 newsletter. You do still have several opportunities to have input into this process. And I really do encourage you to, if you, if you like this process, if you like this proposal or you hate this proposal, get involved, you know, show up at LUPs. I think you all probably know by now, I'm no longer on the Land Use Planning and Zoning Committee. So that has to make through that, that committee. And then it goes to full council. And this is not going to be an easy road. And I do encourage you guys to get involved if you can. And then I saw Cheryl's hand, and then I saw Susan's hand. So go ahead, Cheryl.
Okay, so did I just hear you say that if I look at your newsletter, which I haven't done either yet this month, so shame on me, but I've saved it. So if I look at that newsletter, would it be for January or will it be for this month?
I believe, Cheryl, and I will go back and look. I believe the article was in the January newsletter, talking about this proposal and, and then, you know, where it was going and all. But I will go back after this and double check. And if it's not the January newsletter, we'll send it out to you. But I believe it was the mid-January newsletter.
And will that have, like, links to other additional information? Or is it going to give me guidelines as where I need to look to investigate this more?
So, yeah, there's all the informations in there. We don't have the schedule for when it's coming to council. So you'll need to look for future newsletters to get that schedule of when it's coming to LUPs and when it's coming to full council. But that's always available on the city website as well, so.
And you're not on Land Use anymore?
I'm not.
God, that's a bummer. All right, well, I do appreciate you, Counselor Fiebelkorn.
Thank you. So, all right. I am also bummed to not be on LUPs anymore, just FYI. And then I saw Susan Gorman and then Peggy.
Oh, hi. So I guess I'm next. I'm just curious, I didn't think that I saw Burnley County anywhere in this.
So the Integrated Development Ordinance is a City of Albuquerque dot, you know, regulation. Petra, do you want to add?
Yeah, sure. So the City of Albuquerque is located within Burnley County, but we are both our own home rural municipality. And so the city regulations apply only within, within city boundaries. Burnley County regulations apply only within Burnley County, not where, where, not within Albuquerque. And so the IDO, the Integrated Development Ordinance, is specific to the Albuquerque municipal boundaries. So this would not. Albuquerque municipal boundaries, so this would not apply in Burnley County, and then I shared my screen, I just added the um. Uh, IDO Annual Update webpage, um, so it's um, ABQ dash zone dot com. Slash IDO dash annual updates, a- annual, sorry, dash update dash twenty twenty three, and this. Um, is the page that um has all the proposals in this year's annual update and is where. Um, all the materials are posted, um, and then also will be where all the. Um, dates are posted, and then at LUPs, any amendments that are put together at LUPs will be posted there. Um, and uh amendments then will also be posted there for council, so.
Thanks Petra, and I just want to make sure Cheryl saw that, um, Amanda, would you mind just um making sure that you email that link to Cheryl? Um, I don't know that she, oh, she just came back, so she might get it.
Thank you, that's so helpful, yeah, I came, I came rushing back to look at my screen and went, oh, I don't see that, my mid instrumental note, thank you.
Thank you.
Do you need my email address?
We have your email address, Cheryl, we're good.
Thank you so much, Council.
Um, and then. Oh, yes, Peggy.
Right, Cheryl, another point. Anyway, Council of People Corn, you can always put a plug in for community-wide discussions at District Seven. Meetings and also at the Inter Coalition Council meeting, we talk about. The amendments on a regular basis, and this tribal amendment will be part of our uh. Community effort support.
Yep, there's, there is a lot of community support for this, I I will say, I'm very happy about that. Okay, um, any other questions on tribal consultation? While we have Petra here to give us actual detailed answers. Cheryl, your hand is still up, but you, do you have another question or, okay, I don't think you did, all right. Okay, well, then if there are no other questions for Petra, uh, we will thank her, thank you so much for the detailed um. Information that was presented in a way that, you know, we could all finally understand what was being proposed. I do encourage you folks to um, you know, reach out to Petra if you have questions on the small mapped area. Um, and then uh just follow the newsletter, follow that website that Petra put. For developments as this moves through the process. Thank you so much, Petra, for being here today, we really appreciate you. We're gonna take questions on other topics, and you're welcome to hang out, but you're also welcome to get to your job because you have a lot on your plate, so thanks for being here.
I'll put myself on mute and um my video off and do some other stuff in background, and then if somebody has something, I can circle back.
Thank you, okay, well, we have like fifteen, twenty minutes, so um anybody have anything else they want to ask about today? Uh, uh, oh goodness, I'm sorry, it's hard to see, I think Bill put his hand up, or were those, were that, was that just clapping for Petra?
Well, it's clapping for Petra, but also, I also have my hand up as well.
Okay.
I uh, I I actually, I just, I just have a, just a hmm, I don't know if it's a question or information, but. Uh, at Netherwood Park, which is, you know, the big park over sort of west of um, uh, of Carlisle and and just north of Indian School, uh bordered by I forty. Um, um, there's a uh movement to want to install some playground equipment. And and I just want to inform you that the 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 community right there is is, we're having, we're taking comments now on whether or not. Uh, playground equipment is good, that particular park is very large or is large, and it's it's used for. Particularly when it snows, a lot of people run there with their, their little. Cardboard, whatever, go down the thing, anyhow, um, and uh. I won't say the community's divided, but there's, there's hmm, a lot of the old established houses that are up around the park. Uh, don't want any change, uh, then a lot of the new families uh that are coming in would love to have uh some uh equipment, I mean, like. Summit Park and Altera are pretty close, uh, that have things, anyway, um, I guess the point being. You may hear more about this from, there's a couple of notable people that live in the neighborhood that like to contact their. Their representatives and mobilize them, even though this is just really a uh neighborhood discussion at this point. Um, and the last thing I wanted to say is that the the park equipment that's that is being proposed by. By Dave Simon uh and and possibly funded by by uh both state and city funds. Um, it's, it's a pretty novel design and concept, it's kind of a nature scape, it's not your typical yellow swings and and. Red plastic and blah, 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 um, uh, but it's something that would be unique to the city and. And would I, you know, maybe add character to Netherwood or not, depending on your opinion. So I just want to throw that out there that, you know. It it's a little aggravating that uh it's not just a community discussion, that there's a little backdoor things going on, there's a little bullying going on, there's a little bit of. This and that, which I I have thin skin, and so it 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 ma- doesn't make me very happy, so anyway, I didn't want to let you know about that. Um, and and then one other thing, and it's kind of, it's kind of a native issue, and 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 maybe this, I don't know. I have no idea how this ruffles feathers, but there there was some uh talk a number of years ago, and I thought we might get into this today, that's why I bring it up. About um the renaming of Indian School. Um, uh, Indian School has some implications um that may or may not. Uh, be good, and so um, well, they're not good, but.
Yeah.
Um.
So, oh, sorry.
No, I I just want to throw that out, that that it this, now, it was during COVID, you know, and people were sitting home thinking of things to talk about, and. And that was, of course, one of the things that came up, there's been no solid movement on that, I just want to throw that out there.
So let me answer or give comment back on both of those things, um, so on the Netherwood Park, um, I would, I would definitely say the community is divided. Um, based on the feedback I've gotten, um, I share your concern about the way the process was handled. Um, I think you all know that when we do processes like this in District Seven. We've been um following a community input model that starts with not a solution, but. An identification of problems, we do walkarounds in the neighborhood, we do surveys to get input, and then we come with some potential proposals. To get feedback on that, that process not only is award-winning, but it is also de- designed to stop the kind of. Division that's happening around Netherwood Park. Um, I was not aware of this proposal, I was not invited to the community meeting, I was not, I knew nothing about it. Until I started getting phone calls and emails from folks, so I've reached out to the Parks Department and let them know that, you know, we do have a process that. Creates more unity than what is being used here. Um, so I, you know, I I share your concern that there's something going on here that we're not clear on, because I'm not sure why, I wouldn't have been at least made aware. Um, so I think that what's happening right now is that they are hearing, um, you know, a lot of comments, and that they're gonna try to. Um, synthesize those um to see if they want to move forward, honestly, don't know what will happen on that, but I am, I have inserted myself now. And um we'll continue to monitor it and provide updates in the newsletter and and um as we move forward, because, like I said, didn't even.
Well, well, I I'd just like to add to that, I, you know, that uh, it it did start ground roots and 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 there were um surveys, and uh there were uh. Periods of comment that, uh, and there were walkarounds, I mean, maybe not formal as you outlined. But over the, over the last three or four years, and um, there have, there's a couple of people that are, you know. Have been pushing and and been frustrated by kind of this wall that they they hit, um, and and they they look at it as just a few people that are. That are the wall and not, not, not the general community, and and maybe there's some of the people you've heard from may may characterize this differently. Um, and this one younger individual that is promoting playground stuff. Um, did go around everybody, I mean, he he went, he went right to uh Jerry Ortiz Pino, and he went right to Dave, and he went to, you know. And and bypassed um the Neighborhood Association uh to a large extent. But that issue does and has come up at least three times that I'm aware of since two thousand, that. Different, different people come into the neighborhood and they want something, and. Um, I, yeah, and I I I totally agree that the process could have been a lot smoother and still, still can be, I'm, I'm acting as a conduit for comments. Uh, that I'm compiling and summarizing, I'm keeping the originals, but then, you know, giving, giving David, uh, Dave all the, all the material that comes through. Um, so I I I'm I'm pretty neutral about it, you know, but you know, then again, the community needs to have an open mind as well, so and and I. Um, it it's, it's interesting, and um, I'm, I'm glad you're you're uh aware of it at this point, sorry if. If I had any role in 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 you not knowing more about it, but I mean frankly, it it uh. It it creeps along, and then all of a sudden it raises its little head every so, every so many years, and then it creeps along again. I mean, yeah, that until something happens, so, there you go.
Um, so, yeah, keep me posted, I'll keep you posted as that moves forward, and then on the Indian School um renaming, that was something that folks. Sent to me right after I took office, and I took it to the Office of Equity Inclusion, um, you know, I I. I want to do, I would love to do that, um, the suggestion that came from the community was to change Indian School into Deb Holland Way. Which would make me incredibly happy, um, but I I did take that to the Office of Equity Inclusion and um. There wasn't a lot of enthusiasm at that time, I've brought it back up twice since, I don't want to do something that's that's somehow insensitive. To, you know, actual Native Americans who who would have an opinion on this, um, but it is something that I will bring up again, um. One more time, because I I really, you know, even cringe when I'm giving. Instructions on how to get to my house, because you have to go down Indian School, um, so uh. Know that I have not just dropped that, but I also don't feel comfortable moving forward without the buy-in from the. The tribal liaison at the Office of Equity Inclusion, so.
Yeah, yeah, Deb Holland's a great idea, the the only thing is that, you know, you may not pick somebody's name, because it. It is, it is going to university, and there's all these, you know, university streets that border it, you know, maybe called College Way or something, you know, I I don't know. But uh just saying to avoid any even future, future discussion like that, but I, no, great, just wanted to throw it out there again.
Yeah, I um, yeah, I'll keep it on the list, I bring it up, like, you know, every six months or so, um, just to say, like, hey, is this. Is there any interest in this now?
Um, we're getting serious about traffic too, so you'll hear more about that.
Oh, yeah, that, well, we, yeah, that's a huge need on Indian School and many other streets around, um, okay, uh, Cheryl.
Thank you, I um, I just wanted to. Uh, yeah, that I'm glad you're having a plan for including um Native American input on this issue of Indian School Road. Um, I would tend to agree that maybe we shouldn't choose a person's name, uh, it seems like people, there's always somebody who has disparity with. Many people, I for one have a little disparity with Deb Holland, even though I was totally and totally happy that she got appointed. I have certain problems with that, uh, with with her lack of communication with me and not to disparage her. Um, but. And she's done much, and she's come a long way, so enough on that, but yes, maybe, maybe not a person's name. I think we can't all agree.
Yeah, well, let me just be clear, I, that's, that's the idea that thing that I like, but I would not be the one choosing that, that would, I would not be. I would not be giving my opinion on that through the process, I think the question to the Office of Equity Inclusion thus far has just been. Is there interest in changing this name?
And then would it go out to public opinion, or how would that be done?
It remains to be seen, we'd have to get interest in actually changing the name before we have a process.
Thank you again for your time, Karen.
Yeah, talk to the people at the um, at the Indian Pueblo Cultural Center, that's nineteen Pueblos, I think they're proud of the Indian School now, and they took it over, and it's doing what they want. So we shouldn't, because it had a bad history before, doesn't mean that it's still in in disrepute, they may want to keep it, it's a lot of Albuquerque history. But, talk to them too.
Yeah, we're not, we're not changing it until we get the buy-in from the tribal liaison, it is not gonna happen, it's just something that was brought up by the community, and there was interest in it, and I've been raising it. To make sure that if there is interest, they know they have some support. Um, Susan.
Um, I just have a really quick question, I hope, um, I'd just like to have Amanda's contact information, like email and stuff.
Amanda, do you want to give that out?
Yeah, so my email is gonna be, it's gonna be Amanda. Period. Aragon.
Okay.
And then at C A B.
C A B Q dot, okay, gracias.
Uh, that was, that was an easy question, all right, um, Peggy, I think I answered it.
I did, uh, how, I have a suggestion on that uh Indian School renaming, instead of asking them for their uh buy-in to. Giving you permissions to change the name, why don't we just formalize the authority for them to have the responsibility if they. Want to change the name and just give it all over to them. But that's just an idea, so I had a question on the uh proposal about picking up excrement. Of of um. Unhoused, unsheltered people across the city.
I was wondering if we were gonna make it through this whole meeting without having a discussion about the poop cleanup bill.
Leave it to me, right? Seriously, uh, honestly, I, there is this work program at the city for homeless folks, so you know, get involved and get paid. Why not uh like porta potties that they then can clean? Uh, we need, you know, eyes on the ground where people are doing this, why not put uh a porta potty out and put. Cameras and then, you know, have a team checking them every two hours, and then you can see who's making the problem, uh, I don't think it's. Not, I don't think it's unmanageable, but to to hire a whole new team of people to clean up excrement across the city. Is just giving folks the go ahead, and I just really think that's not the best plan, and. I think that we can involve more of folks who are unsheltered in their own cleanup process than providing for them the services. Um, I really don't feel comfortable with the program as it is.
Um, thanks Peggy, I um, let me just say, I agree that there should be more bathrooms, that's kind of the point of this bill. Um, if you read it, that we have one restroom in this city that is open twenty-four seven year round, one. And it's the one that I just put in the Uptown Transit Center, and so. The move is to, you know, take away bathrooms, not provide additional bathrooms, all of the porta potties that were put out during COVID have been removed now. So there's literally one place that you can go, and. People are going to defecate, that's just a thing, we can't stop, and so short of, and it did take me, I will say. To get that one restroom in that had already been purchased by Diane Gibson, so I didn't even have to purchase it and get it here. I just had to get it installed, and it took me one year and nine months. With all of the red tape at the city, one year and nine months to get one bathroom, and so as long as the city is going to be. Um, so anti-providing for basic bodily functions, um, then I think it is. Clear to me that if we're not gonna provide folks a place to go, they are gonna have to go somewhere. And it is should not be you guys, it should not be people who happen to live by an alley that are then required to risk their health to go out and clean that up. What we're also seeing, which is a real concern to me, is that businesses that have alleys where people are defecating. Have gone out and invested in power washers, and they are power washing the human feces down the storm drains, which ends up in the Rio Grande. And so, given that this is the, this is the situation we're in, and I cannot get support for additional bathrooms, and it took me one year and nine months to get one installed. Um, then I think that this is the next best thing, I agree. Ultimately, what we should be doing is having a bathroom in a lot of places, um, not just for people who are unhoused. But for me, you know, I get off the bus and I might need to go to the bathroom, I'm out shopping, you know, of course, I look like this, and I can go into almost any. Business and say, can I use your restroom, and they say yes, but most people do not share that privilege, and it's, it's a real shame. So I agree with you Peggy, but I can't get more bathrooms, and so this is the middle ground, because I am.
Couldn't it be, couldn't you do the two tasks at one time, I I I just really, I'm loathe to see uh an extended. New opportunity at the city, and 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 I I just believe that the bottom line is more bathrooms. And if it, if it takes.
But we do not have the votes for that, um, and so I'm, I I'm happy to run that bill, but it will not pass, this bill might pass. Um, and it's, that's just the political reality of the City of Albuquerque City Council right now. Um, and if you can whip some votes that I'm unaware of, I would be very open to that, but I can't, and I've been trying for two years. Um, and we just got a little less, um, you know. Um, and we just got a little less, um, you know, interested in these topics. Um, on January first, we have a new composition and it's even less interested in serving, um, those kinds of, of constituents. So I.
Can I ask what the dollar figure was for that bathroom at the Transit Center?
One hundred thousand dollars. Which would buy a lot of, would, would buy quite a few, um, you know, porta potties and it would buy a Portland Lou. But those are not options at this point. And Charles, I think I saw your hand up and then go, then we'll go to Cheryl and we have two minutes. So let's go quick.
My hand was up until, um, you answered, um, you made the comment I would make. And that is porta potties are of value not only to the homeless, but, um, to the public in general. Um, so it isn't something that's being done just for the homeless.
No, I, I completely agree. Um, you know, we go on vacation, we go to other cities and we always find a public restroom. Um, we just don't find that in Albuquerque. So it's, it's frustrating. Um, Cheryl.
So what, am I on, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Um, what, what is the problem with the bathrooms? Where, where are the brakes being applied? Um, uh, I mean, I mean, like, we're a sanctuary city, right? So we welcome.
We are not a sanctuary city. The City of Albuquerque is not a sanctuary city. We have an immigrant-friendly status, which means that we, you know, it's, it's not the same as what some of the bigger cities that are sanctuary cities are. Um, but it's also not really related to whether we provide bathrooms in public to our, to our.
Well, I totally agree. I, I totally agree with that. I was just wondering, I mean, there, I mean, we haven't, we don't have ha- enough housing. It's admitted that we don't have enough housing. We all know we've got endless numbers of homeless people with nowhere to go and it seems to be getting worse and I, and it must be horrible. So I don't, I mean, who, where do we make noise to get this to stop being suppressed?
So there's, there's two avenues that things can change in the City of Albuquerque. One is the City Council. And we don't have the votes there and you're welcome to look at work, reach out to any city counselors you'd like. And the other.
I can look at what? I'm sorry?
You're welcome to reach out to as many city counselors as you like. And the other, the other place that could put in additional bathrooms would be the administration, the mayor's office.
And so why did they take down porta potties that went up during COVID? I mean, I mean.
They were damaged and so they just stopped providing that service.
Someone damaged them? Delinquents came along and damaged the porta potty? Oh my God. All right. City Council and what else did you say? I'm sorry.
The mayor. I mean, things happen. The council or the mayor.
Okay, thank you so much again.
Uh, Michelle, you're going to have to go. It's a little after eleven and I need to get to the roundhouse. But go ahead, Michelle.
Not, oh, not.
Oh, Michelle.
Well, I went to a presentation by Joseph Montoya, the city's housing guy, and he said the trouble with porta potties is that, um, people do drugs in there and pass out and they don't know that they've overdosed. And of course it clogs it up for anybody else, but that, that's been a problem with, with them. Um, so that's one reason the city isn't providing them. There's lots of other places in the daytime. You can go to, um, community centers and senior centers and, and various things like, yeah, the problem is at night. Yeah.
And I will say that, you know, the one that we put in Uptown is not a porta potty. That's not a real good long-term solution. We need the kind of Portland Lou's that are in the Uptown area. Um, they're easy to clean, they're easy to maintain, all, all the things. Um, so that's, that's the, the push that I'm making and will continue to try to get more of those.
What are they called? What are they called?
Portland Lou's? You can just go to the Transit Center and take a look at it. And, and that was announced in the newsletter too, um, when it came on board back in the fall, um, Portland Lou. Um, so yeah, if you guys have any questions, yeah.
Okay.
If you have any other questions on, on this or anything else, um, shoot me or Amanda an email. Um, it's three after, so I've got to run. Thank you for being here this month. We appreciate you all and we'll see you next month. Thanks Petra.